Commissioner Brown says that he's having some issues with his Wi-Fi, but he's trying to get into the meeting. Yeah, well, should we wait to call to order so Commissioner Brown can get situated? For those watching, we're waiting for Commissioner Brown to join us via Zoom before we call the meeting to order.
Eagle has landed.
Perfect. All right. In the absence of our chair, I will call this meeting of the October 8th Planning Commission meeting to order if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Brown, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so our Chair and Vice Chair are both absent from this meeting. So I was advised by County Council that you, Commissioner Price and Commissioner Chavez, will be voting for a Chair Pro Tem.
Okay.
Turn on your mic.
Is my mic on?
No.
Are we on?
You can pull it down when you're talking.
How about that one here?
Better?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. Who do I? I mean, just... Nicole, how should they go about appointing a new? Do we have Nicole? Nicole, are you still on the line?
Hello?
Hi, how should they go about voting a Chair Pro Tem? No problem.
My mic went all weird. They can volunteer, someone could volunteer, or someone can make a recommendation or nomination, and then the Commissioners can vote on that individual.
I will go ahead and request that... Mark, could you help me out and be the Chair?
No, one of you have...
One of us?
Not a random person.
Oh, Eagle, can Eagle do it? Eagle, would you mind running the Chair on this? It was kind of thrown at us all this morning.
So can you guys hear me? I'm having some issues with my bandwidth, so I'm not sure... I can't access the Grandicus to see any of the documents, so I'm trying to do it via my laptop here.
Not a problem. I'll take over if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
All right, just give me just a moment to get my agenda pulled up real quick.
Did we get an affirmative agreement from all three Commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
If we could have it verbally, that would be best.
Say that you approve.
I approve.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you.
Do you approve?
I am in agreement as well.
Perfect.
Okay, looks like the next thing that we need to do is make an action on the minutes from the September 24th Planning Commission meeting. We need a motion to approve those.
I will make the motion to approve the September 24th meeting with no corrections or additions.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, do we have any citizens' input?
No, we do not.
Okay, so today's meeting, it's a public hearing on consideration of major use permit UP 18-32 and mitigative negative declaration IS 18-40. Applicant is Jason Jones proposing a 1A Type 3 medium outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation license and a 1A Type 3 self-distribution license. Project location is 26066 and 27084 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, further described as APNs 013-017-62 and 013-017-66. If you would like to go ahead and give us your report, thank you.
Absolutely. Good morning, Pro Tem Chair Price and Commissioners and those in the public. What we have before us is a discretionary permit, meaning the Planning Commission has the ability to approve, approve with conditions, continue or deny this application. Staffs recommending approval based on an extensive Environmental Quality Act review that was favorable to the project, followed by a staff report and conditions of approval that apply to the project. Applicant is Jason Jones. File number is UP 18-32. This is a major use permit, which puts it categorically in the realm of requiring a public hearing, which is why we're here today. So to give you some basics of the project, I need to clarify, you had mentioned that it was an A Type 3 self-distribution. Technically, it's an A Type 13, and the reason it matters is because it's a different license type from an A Type 3. So what the applicant's proposing on this 79-acre parcel is 1A Type 3 medium outdoor license. And what that basically means is they can have up to 43,560 square feet of plants, plant canopy, and an unlimited amount of cultivation area. However, the cultivation area is what their taxes are based on. In this case, they want to have 52,190 square feet of taxable cultivation area, which meets the requirements for this type of a license. Property is on Jerusalem Grade Road. It's actually two lots that are contiguous to one another. Both are about 40 acres, slightly under, but close enough to where it's essentially an 80-acre piece of land. The cultivation site would actually cross property lines, which is okay because the owner is identical on both properties. We've reviewed the titles, and that's not a problem to have across boundaries. Storage on site for water, water's become kind of a hot topic as far as availability and adequacy of water, so we did a pretty extensive water analysis. They're going to have 10,000 gallons of storage of water on site. They've got an existing well that yields 37 gallons a minute, which is actually fairly substantial. That's a fairly healthy supply of water. We had them do an availability test, and what I mean by that is they did three actual aquifer depth checks. They did one before they started the well up, and it had a certain depth to the water. I don't remember the numbers now. They let the well run for four hours. They did a second test at the end of that four-hour runtime, and the well dropped down, the aquifer dropped down a certain amount. But the important part is they let it shut down for 24 hours. When the well recovered after the 24-hour shutdown, it was almost 100% recharge. So that tells us that it's got a pretty strong water table. The property is zoned RL, which is rural lands. We allow cultivation in rural land zone property. It's also zoned waterway. They have a creek on the property, but the cultivation area is well over 100 feet setback from the top of the bank, which we require minimum of 100-foot setbacks. So they meet that setback requirement. I want to talk about the eastern property. Part of our Article 27, which regulates commercial cannabis, has a prohibition against locating a cultivation site within 1,000 feet of public land. That became a problem because this property has public land next to it. On August 11th, the Board of Supervisors clarified the meaning of public land, and they excluded passive publicly-owned land from active developed public land. In other words, if the neighboring property has a park or off-road vehicle facility or something that's actively used by the public, then that 1,000-foot setback would apply. In this case, it's simply owned by the public. It's BLM land. It is not a designated park. It is not a designated public use area. And because of Ordinance 3096, which was adopted on August 11th, they don't need to set back 1,000 feet from that public land. That ordinance clarified it. And specifically, what the ordinance says is public lands where, because of development or other actions, it is clear that the public is invited to use such locations as places of recreation and other destination activities, including but not located to hiking, birdwatching, equestrian activities and camping. Additionally, all state and county parks are public lands. So the public land adjacent to the site does not qualify under that definition of active public use land. Therefore, that 1,000-foot setback wouldn't apply to this situation. I've talked about the water. Projected water use I haven't touched on yet. Staff is estimating they're going to require 30,000 to 60,000 gallons per month. Based on the yield of the well, based on the onsite storage capacity, they would have no trouble meeting that projected water usage. The property is not in a floodplain. In fact, it's on a hill, so the floodplain issues would not apply to this property. The next thing staff did was we needed to evaluate this project for compliance with the general plan, with the Middletown Area Plan, and with our zoning ordinance. So there were a couple of policies in the general plan that applied relatively directly to this project. One applied to open space. We found that it was not incompatible with the open space policy within the general plan. And with economic development, they would employ up to five people during harvest time. Therefore, it's providing jobs, and as such, it meets the policies within the economic development portion of Chapter 3 of the general plan. The Middletown Area Plan does not touch on commercial cannabis. It doesn't directly have policies that relate to economic development, although it does discuss economic development. But there weren't any policies that directly apply to this within the area plan. Zoning ordinance compliance, there are several sections that we had applied within the review of this project. That includes Article 7, the RL District, which allows commercial cannabis in compliance with other parts of the zoning ordinance. Article 37 is waterways, which requires 100-foot setbacks for many waterways. Actually, it's not in that part. It's, that would be in Article 27. However, it does not conflict with Article 37 waterways. And of course, Article 27 subsection AT, which regulates commercial cannabis. Some of the findings that we had to meet include setbacks. They meet all of their required setbacks. Cultivation and canopy areas are below what's allowed on a 79-acre lot, meaning that they could actually do quite a bit more cultivation than what they've proposed. And so they meet the parameters of what they're allowed to do based on the property size. No prohibited activities are proposed. And within Article 27, they have to meet three separate findings. Finding one, compliance with all development standards must occur. We found that they met all of the applicable development standards. Finding number two, applicant is qualified to make the application. This applicant has passed his background check. He has no barriers to making the application, and he is the owner of record. Number three, application complies with qualifications for the permit. That's the purpose of the staff report and the Sequa review. We had to find that this project is in full compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act requirements, or that potential impacts could be mitigated through the conditions of approval, and that all parts of the general plan, the Middletown Area Plan, and the zoning ordinance were met by this proposal. We made that finding. So the environmental review. We found that there were some potential impacts regarding air quality, biological resources, cultural tribal geologic resources, noise, and wildfire. We also found that through conditions of approval, all of those potential impacts can be mitigated, and that there were no known impacts that would occur that could not be mitigated. So from staff's review and from the comments that we received from different local and state agencies, there were no adverse comments related to potential impacts. We found that it passed the environmental review litmus test. Access, the site is served by Jerusalem Grade Road, and there's an existing interior driveway that serves the interior of the site, including the cultivation area. Cultivation area exists. They were approved for early activation earlier in 2020, and so minimal site preparation was needed. The cultivation area had been prepared prior. There was a fire that actually damaged or destroyed a considerable amount of the cultivation area. They're going to have to recover from that recent fire, and so that's part of living in Lake County, I guess. As far as the use permit findings, there are six findings that have to be met in order for the Planning Commission to approve this project. Finding one, the project can't be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of those living or using property in the vicinity. Number two, the site size must be appropriate for the use. Number three, that streets, pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate. Number four, that there are adequate public or private services. Number five, that it complies with governing documents. And number six, that no violations are occurring from County Code Chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26. So finding one, detrimental to health, safety, and welfare. This area actually has several cultivation sites that are not part of this application. And this area is preferable to many cultivators for a lot of reasons. It's not in a populated area, adequate water, measure of security based on the layout of the property. And so we found that based on the sparse population in the area, based on the topography, based on the water availability, based on the ability to mitigate potential impacts, and based on the other cultivation areas that are in the vicinity, that this project is not detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of those living or working in that area. Number two, site size is appropriate. This type of application requires a 20-acre property. They've actually got close to 80 acres, so the site is well larger than what the minimum standard, minimum size that would be required for 1A Type 3 license. So we found the site size to be appropriate. Streets and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate. Jerusalem Grade Road serves a private gated driveway. We found that given the remoteness of the property and given the existing accesses that it met the adequacy test, leading to the cultivation site for access. Number four, adequate public or private services are available. The property is served by Cal Fire, which is South Lake County Fire. It's served by the Lake County Sheriff's Department. They would use an onsite well. There is an onsite septic system. I'm not clear if the house survived the fire. I believe it did. But it is served by an onsite septic system, and it's served by on-grid power. And so we found that they have adequate public and private services serving the site. Number five, that it complies with governing documents. Well, we did a very thorough evaluation of this project, and we found that it met all of the Sequa potential impacts, and it complied with the general plan, the Middletown Area Plan, and the zoning ordinance chapters that apply. And lastly, number six, no violations of County Code Chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 exist. That was confirmed by our code enforcement department. And so the recommendation of staff is to adopt mitigative negative declaration IS 18-40 and to approve use permit 18-32. And that concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may, I wanted to, we just, well, earlier this morning, we received an e-comment from Sally Peterson from Middletown Rancheria, and I'm not sure that Commissioner Chavez has seen it. So if it's okay, if I can read it into the record so he can hear.
Absolutely, you can go ahead with that.
If I may?
Yes.
Comments from the public would come during the comment period, so we would open the comment period and then have comments, at which time you can go ahead and read any submitted comments into the record.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole. I will go ahead and open it up for a public comment. Jake, is there anybody in the waiting room?
I currently don't have anybody with their hands raised, but I can send a unmute request out.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so that request is out. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hello, my name is Bob Wood.
Good morning, Bob.
Oh, thank you very much. I am an adjacent prop... Shall I go ahead with my comments?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm an adjacent property owner. My property is, my address is 27012 Jerusalem Grade. I am directly northeast of the project area. And I have four questions. Number one is the fenced enclosure is, that faces my property to the northeast is approximately 200 feet long. And it is a, in the documents I have found, it's a felt-covered, eight-foot-tall fence enclosure. And we're concerned about the visibility. So is that, are there measures that are in the plan to screen or to the color of the felt fencing to mitigate the visibility from my property? That's my first question of four.
Eric Porter, could I respond to that first question?
Go ahead, Eric.
I'd like to defer to the applicant. I think the applicant is in the queue.
If I may? Chair?
Go ahead, Nicole. Go ahead.
If we, the public comment period is not a time for conversation. If you have, if it does elicit questions that the Commissioners would like to have answered, then when comments are through, we can, you can direct staff to answer the questions that you have at that time.
Would you like him to go ahead with all four of his questions, and then let me have staff reply at that time?
I think that would be best, because otherwise, I think we run the risk of turning it into a conversation with the commenter, and that's not what the comment period is for.
Correct. If you could go ahead with your other questions for staff, and then I will have him reply all at once.
Okay, I'll try to be brief.
Thank you.
The self, the Type A self-distribution license, the question there is that, that does not mean that there will be retail sales on the property, that it's a wholesale location, product is shipped off the property. It's not a retail outlet. Question number three. In the Sequa document, it talks about the groundwater adequacy test. And you may have answered that with water availability, but I wanted a clarification on the adequacy test as an adjacent property owner. I share that aquifer, and we're concerned there. And number four, we are concerned about runoff of fertilizer and pesticides. And it should be noted that directly to the southeast of the property, down the hill from the property is a spring. And I want to know if that spring was taken into consideration in terms of the studies for the project. Again, that spring probably is associated with the aquifers, and we're, we want to make sure that there's no runoff. Those are my four questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Eric, would you like to respond, or do we use open up to show a public comment at that point?
I'd have to check with our County Council on that. I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to reply now or not.
I think, I think the process should be, you can hear me, yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm having mic issues. I think the process, as we've done up till now, is to allow comments to go through during the open comment period. And as comments are made, if Commissioners, if Commissioners then have concerns or further questions, they can note them. And then once public comment period has closed, the Commissioners can then ask for clarification or further information from staff and/or the applicant at that time.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, Jake, do we have the applicant in the Zoom meeting room?
Yeah.
Yes, there he is.
Have you closed public comment? Is public comment over?
Should I do my, should this one I do, read the e-comment from Sally Peterson?
This would be when you have comments to read into the record, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Nicole.
So we got an e-comment this morning, and I'm not sure that Mr. Chavez was able to see it because he doesn't, he hasn't, this is his first meeting. So this e-comment from Sally Peterson from Middletown Rancheria says, "I wanted to let you know that this applicant has been very collaborative with the tribe, and we much appreciate Mr. Jones's willingness to work with us regarding the protection of cultural resources. Mr. Jones has assured us that the known site will not be disturbed, and if or when any ground disturbance activity should be scheduled, we ask that a member of our team give his workers a cultural sensitivity training prior to that work. Thank you, Sally Peterson, Vice Chair and THPO."
Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
Okay, if that is the only public comment we have, I guess we will go ahead and close public comment. I would like to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to the questions that were just asked.
Yeah, you want me to respond now?
Please, yeah, just state your first and last name.
Jason Jones. As far as the questions that were presented right there, the first one, the neighbor that's to the northeast of me, I believe that's where this person said they were. I think they have the lots confused. The northeast of me is an actual cultivation site. The north end of my property before the fire had the shemice and overgrowth blocking that whole side of the farm, so you couldn't see the fence at all. So there wasn't mesh put up in the fencing. Since the fire has occurred, the fence all has to be replaced now anyway. So if there's something that I need to do to make my neighbors happy out there, I'm willing to put brown instead of green, or green instead of brown. It doesn't make a difference to me. As far as the retail center, I currently have a micro business in the city of Clear Lake. I own one of the dispensaries there. I already have distribution and manufacturing there, so I don't need the cultivation site for that, so that's not a concern of his anymore either. And then as well, I think he has my property confused with someone else because he's saying there's a spring on the south end. end, and that there's another property that does, back behind me that does have a spring. So I think he's a neighbor to another property that's in between us. So again, it's not really a concern.
Okay, I, I understand. I believe his concern was with the runoff from where the cultivation will be taking place, regardless of where the spring is, just the runoff.
I do, I don't have any runoff at all. And then we're over, I guess, the step back to any creeks and waterways a hundred feet. I did like 175 feet, so that it wouldn't be a concern.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Do any of the other commissioners have anything to say? Okay.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Brown. I wanted to see if staff could speak on the aquifer and its connection to any of the properties, if there's impacts of recharge to aquifer, or is it even impacted by the current study that was done?
Eric, if you'd like to respond?
Actually, I'd like to respond to all four of the points that neighbor Bob Woods had raised, if I could. First point, screening. I'd like to propose that we add a condition that clarifies that Jason Jones would be required to screen the fencing. And the wording of it that I have drafted is, it would be new Section B aesthetics. Condition number one, applicant shall screen cultivation fencing using earth tone colors prior to this use permit having any force or effect. That's how I'd like to address the concern about screening that fence. The applicant may want to weigh in on that. If the fence is not visible from-
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all, but that will appease my neighbor and keep it outside. I'm fine with doing that.
Second, second item, Jason Jones actually addressed it, but we do not allow retail sales on cultivation sites. Retail sales have to occur in commercially zoned lots. This is not zoned for commercial use. The Type 13 self-distribution simply allows Mr. Jones to legally transport plants onto and out of his site. And so he would take immature plants onto the site, plant them. Once they reach maturity, he would trim them, package them, and then remove them from the property. Type 13 self-distribution simply protects him from law enforcement activity related to transporting cannabis. Number three, groundwater adequacy. To Commissioner Brown's point, we don't have an advanced way of monitoring the entire water table yet. I'm sure that in time we will. The most advanced tests that we require right now have to do with adequacy of individual wells. And so Jason Jones has provided us confirmation that that particular well has an adequate recharge rate. Given the cultivation activity occurring in the vicinity, I think staff would have some concerns if that well did not recharge, especially in the middle of summer when that test was conducted. There's no evidence to support an inadequate groundwater table at that location. Number four, runoff of fertilizer and pesticides. Jason Jones has provided us with an engineered erosion and drainage plan. And so he has already addressed how he's going to mitigate stormwater runoff from migrating beyond the cultivation area in a significant manner. Staff satisfied that he's met the runoff mitigation test, based on the engineered plans that we've received. And I think that concludes my response to neighbor Bob Woods' concerns.
Thank you, Eric. Commissioner Brown, was that sufficient for you to answer your question?
Yes, it was. Thank you, Bob.
Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have the consultants-
Is this Jake?
Jason Jones, I believe, on Zoom, and he said that he would like to make a comment.
Nicole, do I need to open a public comment for that, or just have him state his first and last name?
Well, if he's speaking for the applicant, I think we can have him speak at the same time as the applicant.
Thank you. Just go ahead and state your first and last name, and go ahead.
Okay, I have sent a mute request to the consultant.
Thank you, Jake.
Yes, hello, my name is Kyle Geitner. Yeah, so to kind of just do a quick touching on those points, again, the fencing would not be an issue. I believe Eric made a good point about the distro, water availability. You know, we conducted all those tests. And then as far as the runoff, again, a good point to make is, you know, we are, Jason Jones, his cultivation method is completely organic, so he takes an organic approach. So there shouldn't be any pesticides or fertilizers being introduced. As far as the soil being used, again, like Eric said, we created, you know, erosion control plans. Same with the state water board. You know, we have our noticeable applicability through them, showing all the best management practices in place. And then, you know, kind of circling back, there shouldn't be anything to cause kind of fertilizer runoff. We are using organic methods. And then as pesticides, you know, we're using just like other-
No.
S and- Yeah, sorry, Jason. Yeah, so there's, if that helps with the concern there, it should be fairly simple. We're using, you know, helpful plants like marigolds, petunias, things that are naturally pest-resistant. And then, you know, other methods like ladybugs and things like that too, to help, and maybe some sulfur, but nothing that will be sprayed and should be passed along through like air travel or water.
Thank you. If any of the commissioners have anything to say, let's go ahead and address that. And if you guys feel comfortable in making a motion, we can go ahead and do that as well. Eagle, are you prepared to make a motion? Excuse me, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I don't have any additional comments. I don't know if any of the board does, but I'm prepared to entertain a motion if there's no additional comments.
Okay, I think you can go ahead with that motion.
Okay, I'd like to move that the Planning Commission find that the initial study, IS 18-40, 54 by Center Grow LLC on property located at 26066 and 27084 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, and further described as APNs 013-017-62 and 013-017-66 will not have a significant effect on the environment with mitigation measures described therein, and therefore mitigated negative declaration, and associate mitigation monitoring report program shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated September 1, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Chavez? Say yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I move that the Planning Commission find that the use permit, UP 18-32, applied for by Center Grow LLC on property located at 26066 and 27084 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, and further described as APNs 013-017-62 and 013-017-66. It does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the major use permit be granted subject to conditions and with findings listed in the staff report dated September 1, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Oh.
Second.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Motion carries as amended.
Commissioners, just to clarify, does that include the recommended addition of the screening of the fencing?
Yes. That being said, the applicant, motion carries. The applicant, for any interested person, is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's any disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay, that being said, we are going to move on to untimed staff update.
I just wanted to introduce the new District Two Planning Commissioner, Everardo Chavez Perez. This is his first meeting. It was a little-
Welcome.
Different than normal.
It's a little different.
So welcome. Scott, did you want to?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Eleone, Community Development, Public Works, and Water Resources Director. I too would like to welcome new Commissioner Chavez. Today was an interesting morning, with a couple of our commissioners out today, and of course having to deal with the Zoom meetings. And would also like to thank Commissioner Price for stepping in this morning and doing an excellent job running the meeting today. So thank you for doing that. And I don't have a whole lot of updates today. Wanted to let, and I think we talked about this at the last meeting, that the board approved our cannabis division. And so we're going to be actively recruiting for positions and manager for the new cannabis division, and we're really excited about getting that moving. And just trying to address the backlog. And yes, just, just continued development and continued training. Staff's doing a good job. We're coming together and getting, getting some projects out. So plan to see more and more coming your way. And I did want to note that our Deputy Director, Takara Thomas, is at training today. And I had forgotten that she was scheduled to do a training, and so I apologize that she was not available to meet you, Commissioner Chavez, this morning when you visited our office. But she will certainly reach out to you. And she, and I, and any of the members, Mark, Mark Roberts there is our principal planner, if you have any questions, Commissioner Chavez, please feel free to reach out to us, and we'll be happy to try to help. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have regarding the department. But that will conclude my presentation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Quick question, are you guys still working on compiling the reports for you guys' site visits? And do you have an idea on when we might be seeing those?
Well, we're, I hope soon. Yes, we are working on those. Mark, I don't know if you or Kate know, remember, you've got those tentatively scheduled?
Yeah, I scheduled them. The legal notice went out for the next meeting on October 22nd. We will be doing the first round.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other office news? Well, welcome aboard. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for being patient with me. I was kind of thrown into this today. But that being said, this meeting is adjourned.